We're ready to go, so I'd like to call the regular monthly meeting of the Town of Fairfield for December 19th, 2022 at 8:00 PM be called to order. Can the clerk please take the roll?
Ed Bateson?
Here.
Marty Fury? Melissa Longo? Thank you. Melissa Longo? Amy Ruggero? Bill Gerber?
Here.
Karen McCormick? Cindy Peram? Jeff Steele? Alex Durrell? Jeff Galdenzi? Tom Lambert?
Here.
Sharon Pistilli?
Here.
Laura Carson?
Here.
Michelle McCabe?
Here.
Marcy Spalier?
Here.
Liz Esma? Jennifer Barahona?
Here.
Josh Garskov? Joe Seibert?
Here.
Jay Walk?
Here.
Steve Barrettts? Hannah Gale? Andy Grisaffa?
Here.
Lisa Havy? John Keun?
Here.
Mark McDermott?
Here.
Jill Vergara? Karen Whackerman? Cameron Cheniski? Hank Ferentz? Pamela Iacono? Jim Myers? Christine Brown? Drew Georgiadis? Margaret Horton? Kelly Sinto? Ken Astorita? Peter Britton? Brooks Baracino? Story Tullman?
Thank you, Betsy. So I'm assuming everybody on WebEx can hear us since you said you were here. Okay, thank you. Let's all please rise for the pledge. Okay, let's go to item number two, to consider an act upon the minutes of the regular meeting held on November 28th, 2022. Can I have a motion approved, represented by Iacono, seconded by Representative Vergara? Are there any changes or comments? Okay, seeing none, we'll take it to a vote. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay, it looks like that motion carries unanimously. Okay, item number three, to hear a report from the Joint Retirement Investment Board. We heard that last week at committee. Carolyn Tribuco joined us. So I would like to make a motion to take items number five and six out of order and bring those above the harbor management commission report. Do I have a motion approved? Representative Iacono, seconded by Representative Seibert. All those in favor? Aye. Okay, we're good. Okay, item number five, to hear, consider an act upon the following resolution as recommended by the Board of Selectmen. Resolve that in accordance with a request from the Affordable Housing Committee and the Director of Community and Economic Development, and in accordance with a favorable recommendation from the Town Planning and Zoning Commission, the purchase of 376 Quincy Street within the Parkview Commons Development B and hereby is approved. Do I have a motion to approve? Representative Georgiadis, seconded by Representative Gerber. Mr. Barnhart gave us a presentation last week. He is here. If there are any other questions? If not, we can take this to a vote. Okay, seeing none? All those in favor? Aye. Abstentions? That motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Barnhart. Item number six, to hear, consider an act upon the following resolution as recommended by the Board of Selectmen. Resolve that the amended, restated interlocal agreement Fairfield County Hazardous Incident Response Team in the form presented to this meeting, the interlocal agreement, and in accordance with the recommendation of the Chief of the Town of Fairfield Fire Department B and hereby is ratified and approved, and further resolve that the Chief of the Town of Fairfield Fire Department is authorized to present the interlocal agreement to the first select woman for her approval and signature. We do have Chief McCarthy here again tonight, but he was here last night and asked all our questions. Does anybody have any other questions, comments? Seeing none, let's take that to a vote. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Chief. We'll head back to item number four, to hear a report from the Harbor Management Commission, and we have Mr. Jack Herschler and Ms. Kim Taylor here to give us a presentation, so come on up and whoever's going to start. Thank you.
While I'm talking?
We don't like hot mics there. It's while you're talking.
Okay. Something new to get used to?
Hold them like that. You gotta really speak to them.
All right, can you hear me? I can hear me. Can you hear me? Great.
How many people we worry about?
My name is Kim Taylor. I'm Chair of the Harbor Management Commission. I'm here this evening with Jack Herschler, who is the Vice Chair of the Commission. We wanted to give you a heads up about four issues that are currently before the Commission. We think that you will be interested in learning about them. We don't want to take a lot of your time, so we are laser focused on providing you about 20 minutes, so if you wouldn't... till the end, we can get through. Sorry about that. Please raise your hand if you can't hear me, because I'll pay attention to that. Can you hear me now? Okay, great. Sorry about that. The Fairfield Harbor Management Commission was created in 1986 by the RTM. It was created after the Connecticut Legislature passed in 1984 the Harbor Management Act. The purpose of the Act was to give localities authority and control over the local waterways. There are about, to date, about 20 communities up and down the shoreline that have harbor management commissions. If you look at this picture over here, the harbor management jurisdiction goes from the end of the breakwater all the way back up the Mill River to the Tide Mill Building, all the way east to Kenzie Point, and all the way west to the Sasko Brook. A pretty big area to manage. The first issue that we'd like to bring to your attention is the update of the Fairfield Harbor Management Plan. The Act authorizing the creation of the harbor management commissions also authorized the commissions to create a plan to govern, manage, the harbor management area. The plan that for Southport Harbor took seven years to write. It's a very comprehensive document with all sorts of policies, goals, procedures, descriptions of regulatory authority, suggestions for public access, for mooring administration, everything you would ever want to know about what goes on within that area is detailed in the current Fairfield Harbor Management Plan. That was written in 1995 and it was approved in 1995 by the RTM. This year, towards the end of the year, we hope to bring to you an update to that plan. We've been working for three years to do the update. We will have some new objectives, some new goals. Some of the objectives that were written into the 1995 plan have been accomplished, such as acquisition of the Lower Wharf. In order to dredge the harbor in 2004, the Army Corps of Engineers required us to have a plan, and we did have that plan so that they came in and did the dredging in 2004, 2005. The harbor management plan has been an important document in large part because it does give us control over the activities that happen in the harbor and on the lands adjacent to the harbor. And if you'll recall, the Exide remediation project, the town was able to get involved in that because of the harbor management plan. It gave the town, the Conservation Commission, the Fairfield Harbor Management Commission, and the Shellfish Commission, the authority to participate in the negotiations with Exide. So it's already proved to be a very important document. In 2020, the 2023 plan that we hope to present to you is the result of a lot of public input. We did a survey in 2021. We asked members of the community for their views on the policies that are currently in place, what kinds of things would they like to have done in the harbor, how do they use the harbor, and generally, what suggestions did they have for us as we update the plan? We had over 300 responses, very thoughtful comments included in those responses, written comments, and interestingly enough, we discovered that while you would, from this picture, it appears that an awful lot of the folks who use the harbor and who value the harbor are boaters. But from our survey, we discovered that people, as many people, use it to walk their dogs, observe nature, get outside, view wildlife. So it's not just a boating community that values all the activities that go on in and around Southport Harbor. The new plan will continue to have many of the same policies that were included in the 1995 plan. We've also, however, added some harbor and coastal resiliency goals and objectives, as well as some public safety drills and the need for those kinds of public safety drills given the amount of boating activity that goes on in the harbor, as well as sand management, because, and we'll discuss sand management as item number three that we described to you. This great plan that we have to give the town some authority in and around the harbor, however, is jeopardized by recent court decision, and I'll let Jack describe that to you.
Good evening. As Kim indicates, while we have a major update to the plan to bring before the RTM later this year, there is a very recent court decision that we think is critical for the RTM to be aware of. There's nothing immediately for the RTM to do about this other than to be aware and to pay close attention to what happens legislatively to address what's just happened in this court decision. This court decision is a case called Cohen versus the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection, or DEEP, the state regulator. In this case, we're going to see that the outcome of this case is a diminution of local jurisdiction authority over the harbor management commission's role in the state, really a change in what's been in place since that 1984 law that created harbor management commissions in the state of Connecticut. In this case, which was a case involving the Town of Greenwich, what happened was a neighbor of a property owner objected to the creation of a dock that was not attached to the adjoining land. In fact, it was just outside of the high watermark and under state control, but therefore not under local municipal jurisdiction. Historically, the recommendations that are made by local harbor management commissions under the 1984 law were binding on the Connecticut DEEP unless the DEEP could show cause why they should not follow the harbor management commissions and the communities' decisions. And in this case, the harbor management commission had never contemplated someone building a dock that didn't attach to the land abutting it, and so they didn't have anything exactly addressing that issue written in their harbor management plan. The court ruled that because there wasn't a specific addressing of that situation in the harbor management plan, the fact that they had general policies was insufficient to override the interests here of the state and the state's judgment about whether they would give a permit to somebody to create a dock that wasn't attached to their property and a little bit outside of the town's jurisdiction. This is really important. As Kim mentioned, the Exide case here in Fairfield. Imagine if instead of 2012 when that happened, it was 2023 next year when the issue of the lead contamination in that site became something that we were aware of. In that case, in 2012, in a public meeting, the attorney representing Exide said that no local approvals are necessary as they develop their plans to remediate the Exide plant sediment. And the harbor management commission's then-chair said, "Well, no. The waters from the Mill River from that site flow directly into the harbor management area, and as a result of that, we do have authority over that." And so the harbor management commission, as well as the Shellfish Commission and the Conservation Commission, all had a strong voice in the remediation plan that the state actually approved in that case. So here we are. This has been appealed to the State Supreme Court, and they did not accept the harbor managing commission in Greenwich's argument that should be heard by the Supreme Court. And so the next step would be for a legislative correction to clarify the 1984 law that created harbor management plans, to make it clear that the exact situation doesn't have to be in the harbor management plan. A policy that relates to that is sufficient to give the harbor management commission authority to give guidance to the DEEP.
So the third issue we wanted to bring to your attention was our sand management and dredging issue. And again, if you look at this overhead picture here, we're talking about that big bump of sand on the eastern shore of the channel, right there by the Country Club of Fairfield. The entrance to the channel and the channel all the way north and south is what we call the Federal Navigation Project. It's one of the earliest federalized navigation waterways in New England. And the jetty that you see there on the upper part of the picture was built in the late, in the early 1800s to channel the river and to keep the water flowing in order to do a little bit of natural sand management, as well as to provide a defined entrance to and from the channel. In the old days, before the Country Club was there, the water just kind of spewed out in a funnel shape, and the water was very shallow. In fact, back in the early 1800s, folks would come in with oxen and scrapers at low tide in order to make the channel navigable and the waters navigable for the onion and other commercial vessels that came in and out of the harbor. So in reality, what we're talking about today in terms of managing the sand and keeping the channel open and available to boaters is not much different than what's been going on since the 1820s. The sand moves from east to west, it continues to move from east to west, and the picture of the bump that you see there now, that was taken in 2019. And since that picture was taken, the channel has gotten narrower and shallower. Originally, it was 100 feet wide. Today, it's significantly less than that, and at low tide, it's dangerous. One boat that can pass by the lower wharf there in that very narrow spot, but not two. And in some places, the harbor master has determined that it's about five feet deep, which if you're in a boat that draws a lot of water, you're going aground. So it's a problem. So what are we going to do about it? Dredging is a complex process. It takes a long time because we need state approvals, state approvals, as well as federal approvals, and it's very expensive. Since I've been on the commission, which is seven years now, we've been talking about dredging the channel and dredging that bump of sand. It was on the agenda of the Harbor Management Commission before I joined the commission, and as I said, obviously, since the 1800s. Dredging is the responsibility of the Army Corps of Engineers, and they have been interested in dredging since I've been on the commission. But last year, they got over $1 million, and so now they're motivated to get the dredging project done. So far, we have worked with the Corps to satisfy the concerns that they had about piping plover habitat on that edge of the channel, as well as panic grass, which was an endangered species further north of us, further south, it's a common grass, but nonetheless, it caused some delays and some problems in the last dredging project. We're hoping that we will have some dredging in the winter, the dredging season of 2024. Why does that take so long? Frankly, because the Army Corps of Engineers, which has a plan, a very detailed plan, about how much sand they're going to remove, what they're going to do with it, the quality of the sand, which believe it or not matters, because in this case, they want to take the sand, dump it offshore to create oyster habitat. It's good material for oysters, which like to propagate very well in sand as opposed to mud. In any event, the Army Corps of Engineers has to file a report with DEEP, and DEEP can say to them, "Yes, you can dredge 100 feet wide," or "No, you can't dredge 100 feet wide." They have the final say. As I say, we're hopeful that in the winter of 2024, something will begin. But the Harbor Dredge, which is the boat that they will use to come in and kind of suck up the sand and drive offshore and then deposit the sand, has been in dry dock for two years, and there are a lot of places up and down the East Coast that need to have dredging done. So it's not at all certain when they will dredge. The other thing that the commission is considering, since sand management is a major issue, the Connecticut Port Authority has told us that they will have, they would be interested in giving us a grant to do some technical studies related to managing the sand there. I'm not quite sure what that means, but they seem to think that there are some possibilities. So that would be something that we would be pursuing, getting that money and beginning that kind of work sometime in the near future. And Jack has one more issue to tell you about.
All right, the last issue that we want to bring to your attention is right across the channel from the sandy area that Kim was just talking about, and this is the Lower Wharf area. If you've been there, it's a flat, open, public area owned by the town and a pier structure that's a raised pier. There's some pilings on the north end of it that are just old pilings without any superstructure on top that you could stand on, and to the south side, there's a place where fishermen like to fish, and it's also where the blessing of the fleet occurs every springtime. The topic of the Lower Wharf is important because there are going to be costs coming before the RTM to maintain it and preserve it. This relates to both the seawall itself of the Lower Wharf and also the pier itself, the pilings and the structure on top of the pilings, the pier. The condition of the Lower Wharf, I would say, is aging. This is a historic property. The wall itself dates back to the 18th century with stone wall that was created at that point, filling in a marshy area, and has been maintained over the centuries, but it's in need of additional maintenance at this point. The pier structure, the wooden part, has been examined by the consulting engineer and the town's engineering department and the public works department at this point. The Harbor Management Commission is currently seeking DEEP approval to get a right to repair and upgrade the seawall and the pier, and separately, we've received an estimate of $800,000 from our consulting engineer for the cost of both a repair of the aging wall and repair of the raised pier for fishing. We've interestingly been encouraged by the Connecticut Port Authority to apply for a Small Harbor Improvement Grant that would cover 80% of the cost of this project, but would require 20% or some $160,000 to be borne by our town. And so that's why I think it's important for the RTM to be aware of this emerging need. In addition to that, and unrelated to the wall and to the pier, but in the same area, is an area of a little rocky beach, and for those of you who have dogs, you might have had your dogs exercise off that beach and jump into the water. It's a common thing that people like to do. In connection with a transfer of the abutting property to this town-owned Lower Wharf recently, it's our understanding that there was an agreement that the abutting property owner was going to build stairs so it would be safe for people visiting that little tiny, well, fairly small beach area there so they could do it safely, because the way to get to it now is over riprap, which is sort of rocky boulders, not very safe for people to climb over to get down to that area. To our surprise, that has not been constructed, and so there is no stairs, and that commitment to the town has not been followed through on. So I wanted to make sure that the RTM was aware that we're aware that there was an understanding that the owner was going to do that in connection with that arrangement with the town and that there are no stairs today. So those are the four topics we thought all would be of interest to the RTM relative to the Harbor Management Commission. If there are questions, Kim and I would be delighted to answer questions about. Those four are the 35 pages of presentation slides that we handed you on the Southport Harbor past, present, and future presentation that was included in your packets for this meeting.
Are there any questions from the body?
Hi, Cindy Peram, District 2. As a boater in town, can you point back to where that pier, the pier is there? Do you have signage there? Because sometimes when we bring the boat in, there's like people jumping off into the navigational channel, and I'm wondering if there's signage to not do that, because I've never really looked on the other side.
Great question, and one that makes us very concerned. The kids jump off at high tide. There are signs, no swimming, no jumping. We put signs up a couple of summers ago, and the next day, the signs were gone. We went back and put up more signs. It's hugely dangerous, and we have been encouraged to contact the marine police when we see that, but by the time the police get there, the kids have usually disappeared. But it's incredibly dangerous. Sailboats, as you know, can't stop. The kids often jump in front of the boats.
How far away is the yacht yard security guard from where those kids are jumping or people are jumping? Oh, so they wouldn't be able to really monitor?
We have asked and inquired, asked the security guard what he can do and what he can do. he can see. And he doesn't really have the authority and he can't see. A lot of people who park at Yacht Yard have called it to our attention because they can Parking lot, obviously, the kids jumping. Sadly, we have parents who are watching the kids jumping and taking videos of it and saying... So it's a very dangerous situation.
Thank you, Representative Peram. Any other questions? Representative Bateson?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ed Bateson, District 1. Thanks for the presentation. Longtime boater, longtime resident. In your slides, I was fascinated to find out about the Outer Harbor. I never knew of its existence. I always thought the harbor was just that. So when I read that it goes to buoy R-22 in Kenzie Point, I'm interested in how your plan is going to... Is there anything there that is going to encourage more recreational use of that? I just thought that anything that happened in those waterways in the Outer Harbor was under federal management, that it was their decision. So I mean, are you exploring any alternatives to expand recreational areas out into there?
Well, in the Outer Harbor, towards the east, is shellfish commission territory. That's where if you want to get a permit and get shellfish or clams, that happens out there. We really aren't encouraging any more recreational activity out there, particularly not any more moorings, because it's unsafe in storms. It would be a bad place. The town owns the mooring tackle for all of the boats that are moored in the harbor. And for the town to be investing in mooring boats out there where, in a storm, there's a lot of wind, a lot of current, a lot of bad things could happen, and a lot of loss of boating tackle and damage to boats could occur. So I guess the short answer to your question is no, we are not encouraging any additional activity out there.
Thank you, Representative Bateson. Representative Steele?
Just one addition. Because that area expands as far as the border of Fairfield with Westport on the west side, the question about the jumping off of pilings, and it also relates to the bridge at the border at Southport Beach. And we've also arranged for signage there because the same problem with children jumping into shallow water off of that bridge does fall in our jurisdiction up to the point where it goes into Westport. So the town of Fairfield has now posted signs, again, within our jurisdiction in that harbor management area to encourage safety for children for the same exact issue you raised.
Thank you. Representative Steele?
Jeff Steele, District 2. Just a couple of quick follow-up questions. When was the last time it was dredged? 2004. And what is the recommended... I mean, does it depend on storm and everything else, obviously? And as part of that, I assume here it is enlarged here because of storm drift and everything else? Yeah. And you mentioned the pier was going to be potentially taken care of partially by the town, but also grant money. What about the dredging? Is that because it is a federal rodaway? It would be federally funded? Okay, maybe you said that. I just wanted to ask again. And the last one I'll ask too. That beach area we talked about, the steps going down, privately owned area or not?
The town.
Okay, that's the town area. Okay. Yeah. Yeah, right. Okay. All right. That's it.
I would just add that when the town agreed to swap the land down there by the Lower Wharf, there was an easement across the riprap that allowed people to go to get down to the beach. And that was swapped out as a result of that. The original width of the channel was 100 feet. And the Corps is hoping to dredge back to 100 feet. In 2004, when the last time they dredged, DEEP said, no, you can't go to 100 feet. You can only go to 75 feet because of the panic grass and the piping plovers. So this time, we've done a lot of monitoring, and the Army Corps of Engineers is confident that we've taken care of all those environmental issues. So we're really hopeful that this time DEEP will say, okay, go to 100 feet.
Any particular storm?
Oh, that's been accreting over time. If you look in the handout, the slide package, we can see in 1964... So it builds up fast. And of course, if you have hurricane sandies and storms like that, it gets to be a bigger mound of sand faster.
Thank you, Representative Steele. Representative Astorita?
Ken Astorita, District 10. I'm just trying to get a little bit more understanding of the impact of the court case that you were talking about. So in general, it seems that you indicated that we would be losing some aspect of local control. As someone who's not really familiar with the ins and outs of harbor management, I don't really understand what that means. Can you provide like a couple of concrete examples of how that could theoretically impact us?
I think maybe the best example was the excite remediation, because it's so scary if the town had minimal voice in the remediation plan that was put in place in 2012. And what this court ruling has said is its interpretation of the 1984 Harbor Management Act language is that the specific issue, the exact issue, needs to be anticipated in the harbor management plan, which, as Kim indicated at the outset, is a voluminous document. But it's not realistic for us to anticipate every possible thing that could come up. Historically, if a harbor management commission in any of the communities in the state that have them had a policy, it was understood by DEEP and acknowledged by them and by the commissions across the state that if there was a policy, then DEEP had to follow the views of the local commission in determining whether DEEP was going to give a permit, for example. So somebody who wants to build some structure off of their property in Southport Harbor, the remediation efforts, any other imaginary thing that could come along that would involve requirement of approval from DEEP, no longer, unless it's specifically addressed exactly in our harbor management plan going forward, is not something that they have to follow. Historically, they would have to show cause why they didn't follow the local municipal harbor management commission's view of that. That's an important difference, I think. It relates to things that connect to the abutting land. So if someone is building something off of abutting land anywhere in the harbor management area, which, as we just talked about, isn't just the inner harbor, it goes all the way out to Kenzie Point. So if new houses are being built on Kenzie Point and they got approval for one dock, if someone else buys a house there and wants to build an additional dock, we would lose our opportunity to weigh in with the DEEP if now four docks are being built out on that Kenzie Point area, just as a possible future scenario.
Thank you, Representative Astorita. Representative Pastilli?
Thanks, Mr. Moderator. Sharon Pastilli, District 3. I remember boating on that land swap, and I was wondering if there's a remedy to the stairs not being built.
Neither Kim nor I are clear. I think this is a town attorney question because the property has since changed hands, I believe. So does the current owner of that property, according to the agreement that was made, have the obligation to construct the stairs to protect against injury to somebody now on the town's property that they traded? I don't know the answer. I guess it's a legal judgment we need an answer to.
Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Pastilli. Representative Georgiades?
Drew Georgiades, District 9. I'm following up on Representative Astorita's question because I'm a little confused as well. In the court case that was in Greenwich, it was off the shore, and you said it was outside the town's jurisdiction of water. So that's why I don't understand the reference to the excite, because that's not outside... It's not offshore. Was that why that case, that particular situation came up? And so does it only apply to things that move from the town property to town water into federal waters?
The state owns the property from the high-water mark waterwork. In Greenwich, the folks, the Greenwich Town zoning laws prohibited the dock. And so these folks built the dock so that it would be in state territory, not subject to the Greenwich Town laws. And the Greenwich Harbor Management Commission said, no, you can't do that. And the court said, yes, we can, because there's nowhere in your harbor management plan that you said that you can't build docks that don't attach to land. So the situation is that unless we have... Unless we say in the harbor management plan that if it's determined that excite polluted the waters in the Mill River, that the town can be involved in the cleanup. Unless we have that explicit language in the harbor management plan going forward, the town would not be... According to DEEP and the court, the town would not be able to get involved in that activity, in that cleanup activity, because it would be below the high-water mark. It would be on state-owned property. Whereas now, any activity on land surrounding the harbor that could impact the waters in the harbor has to come for us, for what we call a consistency review. So we get to say, yes, this dock, building this stone wall, building this wharf, is consistent with our harbor management plan, or it's not. And because folks need the okay from DEEP as well, when we make those comments under the current plan, not necessarily since the court decision, but under the current plan, DEEP had to pay attention to what we said. Now, DEEP is saying, you harbor management commissions, you are no more important than any member of the public. So you don't have the authority anymore to say... Because DEEP is bound by what we say unless they show cause otherwise. It's complicated.
The only thing I would add to that is that it was very clear that the legislative intent in 1984 was exactly to give towns like Fairfield authority to not let the state regulators just decide for the towns what was going to be okay and what wasn't going to be okay. So it's troubling to see that something that was created in 1984 exactly to prevent this kind of thing from happening is now what's happening. The solution is going to be to clarify that section of the code. By the way, if you're interested, it's Section 22A-113NB in the Connecticut General statutes that we're talking about. Again, 22A-113NB.
Thank you, Representative Georgiades. Representative Vergara?
Jill Vergara for District 7. We are so lucky to have you stewarding this important asset. You clearly have such a great depth of knowledge, and you're incredibly dedicated to this. I myself, being on the other side of the coastline, am envious of your purview over this asset. And I know that our Chapter 24 limits your authority to Southport Harbor. But I've become aware of some really serious problems and gaps with our side by Ash Creek. And it's concerning that there are docks being built and there's not a lot of oversight. The only body that's really watching this is the state, DEEP. And we don't have the same layer of protection that Southport Harbor has. So I know that you said that you have a broad authority. It's a huge jurisdiction for you. But I was hoping in revising the ordinance, you would contemplate at least some areas over in Ash Creek where you could extend jurisdiction, because it's problematic that applications have fallen through the cracks.
DEEP has a process for approving dock applications by waterfront property owners that require the waterfront property owner to simply file the paperwork, and then nobody looks at it, and it's approved. And that's what happened in Ash Creek. Unfortunately, you're right, our jurisdiction goes only to Kenzie Point. The state has become concerned, however, that there are no local eyes over on that part of town. So the harbor master, who is responsible for where boats get moored and the boating safety rules and activity, is appointed by the governor. And we recently, I guess two years ago now, the harbor master is Brian Leclerc. He was appointed by the governor not just to be the harbor master in Southport, but to be Fairfield's harbor master. And his jurisdiction extends all the way over to Ash Creek. He does not... That's some help. He's responsible for taking a look at any applications by folks who live on Fairfield Beach who want to put moorings out in front of their homes. They have to go get his okay to do that. But there's no procedure, there's no process by which the harbor master is responsible for any of the dock applications or any of that. But he is a set of eyes that is responsible for the whole of Fairfield's coastline at this point. So that is another set of eyes. But the basic problem there is, I think they call it 1401 docks or 14-1 docks, something like that, where simply the homeowner files the paperwork and DEEP says okay. The harbor master is appointed by the governor. He is compensated by the state and by the town. He's an ex-officio member of the Harbor Management Commission, but he is a state official with state authority to manage Fairfield coastline. So...
Representative Iacono? Thank you, Representative Vergara.
Pam Iacono, District 8. Through you, Mr. Moderator, to the commissioners. Two questions. Number one, when do you anticipate that the legislature is going to take up the issue that this has now been tapped back to them? Is there a timeline for that? You're both shaking your heads, no. Okay. Has the commission reached out to our local state delegation, and are they in support of advocating for this to remain local? All three of them? We have a new representative-elect. Are all of them on board, plus our state senator? Would you please state for the record who you've spoken to and who is in support?
We've reached out to Kristin McCarthy-Wehde. We've reached out to Jennifer Lieber. Our consultant has reached out to Senator Huang. And one of our commissioners reached out to Laura Devlin, who obviously is no longer in office. We have... This decision was just... The Supreme Court just decided not to hear the appeal. So we are in the process now of putting together a briefing book and getting together So we are in the process now of putting together a briefing book and getting together with the state legislative delegation. And obviously, we didn't want to do anything during the election season. So that's one of our action items for 2023, is to meet with them and it's a complicated issue and get them up to speed on it, so.
And then my second question is a follow-up on the land swap that we did where you still don't have the stairs. So you have jurisdiction then because that water comes in there and now it's part of the town? And listening to your, might, you explain how all that works, correct? Okay. Has the commission reached out to the town attorney to find a solution for any of this?
It was just a year ago.
Okay. Would you please put that back on an agenda and get that on the town attorney's, you know, on his forefront so that he can be made aware of it? Thank you.
For those of you who did not hear their answer, the town attorney was contacted a year ago and have not heard anything since. Representative Volk?
I want to thank both of you for everything that you're doing. It's not easy. So my question, I want to go back to signs. It's the first I'm hearing that children are jumping in front of, jumping in and getting hit by boats. So it's amazing that I'm hearing. Oh.
Nobody's been hit by boats. Potentially, they could get hit by boats.
Oh, so you can potentially get hit. Okay, so the signs that you've put up is just warning people, you know, the kids from jumping in at these points where you're saying, where the boats are going by, you're saying they're swimming in these areas?
Swimming, no jumping.
No swimming, okay. So that takes like the, so if something actually happens in the, in that harbor, would you know that these signs protect the town? So like if somebody's child gets hurt in the harbor, who, who would be responsible? Would the boater who hit the child, it would be between them? So the town, you know, the harbor, we wouldn't be, you know, liable for something like that? But signs, I guess, would work because it would put the, you know, the point of not, you know, you shouldn't go there and take the, you know, it off of the, off of a town. Is that something?
Jay, they put signs up that have been stolen and taken down several times, it sounds like. So it's not like the signs haven't been there. They disappear.
Well, my other point is, signs, people don't read them anyway. I mean, people go in regardless of signs. It's happened here in town at Lake Mohegan. It's happened up with my nephew not understanding that signs, you shouldn't jump in a pothole. And he, well, it's, he died. He jumped in potholes in Vermont. What happens is the rain comes the night before and it turns into like a quarry, what happened to the child at Lake Mohegan. And they jump in and they don't realize that there's currents underneath and they're pulled under. And they found Bentley about three miles down, down the river from that pothole. But there were signs up, people's, that you have to, they cut through people's homes to get into these potholes, which is unbelievable. And one state trooper in Vermont actually died trying to save somebody in one of these potholes. But yet people still go there and they still jump in and they still don't think that it's a problem. And it's the same thing what you're saying. But thank you very much for everything that you're doing.
Thank you, Representative Volk. Is there anybody else? Did you have a comment?
Let me just respond. Also, Kim reminded me that the town code for the harbor actually specifically addresses swimming in the harbor. So it's also against the law in the town. So it's not just the signs, it's against the law. And the police certainly can act on it. The harbor master certainly does act on it. But they can't be watching every moment of the day. Neighbors are helpful because if they see it happening, they can call the marine police and they can get over there quickly.
Thank you. Anybody on WebEx have any other questions? I don't see the chat's not up, so. Representative Gerber?
Hi, Bill Gerber, District Two. Thanks so much for your presentation. This is kind of a question just out of ignorance. How do you interact with the other towns' boards and commissions? Are you, do you have any interaction with flood and erosion control board or do you take that role for yourself for that area in terms of how the beaches around the harbor, you know, are built up? The reason I ask is you mentioned what you're going to be, you know, expect to do with the sand that's dredged from the harbor. And I remember some of the debates about what to do with the sand dredge from, you know, the other harbor. Is that within the control of the state or does the town have any say over that? But for the areas, you know?
Sorry, the answer was state. If you want to come up.
Well, the state, when we dredge over here, the state is going to be the one that ultimately decides where that sand goes. The Army Corps of Engineers wants it, and as does the Connecticut Bureau of Aquaculture, wants it to be deposited offshore to improve the oyster habitat. DEEP has told us they want that sand to nourish beaches. So we'll see how that ends up.
And, you know, the, the interaction with, like with FEMA and with the flood and erosion control board regarding sort of the height of the beaches and stuff like that, we're looking at a lot of this stuff. That's not within your purview. Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Representative Gerber. I'm getting up because I don't see any hands, so. And I don't see anybody in the chat. So last chance. All right. Thank you, Jack, and thank you, Kim, for your presentation. We really appreciate it. Hopefully, we get those stairs put in. It's very convenient that the old owner sold and now no stairs. Because I remember we approved that. All right, gang. Item number seven, to consider and act upon any other matters presented to said meeting and which may be properly acted upon under the rules of the representative town meeting. Anybody? Beautiful. I wish everybody a happy Hanukkah, Merry Christmas, Kwanzaa, whatever you might celebrate during this time of year, and a Happy New Year. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn. Representative Vergara, seconded by Representative Georgiades. See everybody in January.
Happy holidays.